Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Housing and Building. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please do not approach the dais at no time. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. One of us, Sergeant of Arms, will kindly assist you. Also, there will be no food and drink in the chambers, I mean, the committee room. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I am Councilmember Pierreina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Thank you for joining us today on our hearing on building integrity. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues who are present, which right now is Councilmember Crystal Hudson, who is with us virtually. At the end of last year, on a sunny Monday afternoon, as kids walked home from area schools, families living in 1915 Billingsley Terrace were displaced from their homes after the corner of their building collapsed. Although there were thankfully no fatalities, two were injured, and families in, and those in the community watched in terror as a piece of their neighborhood crumbled. You see, the scene at 1915 Billingsley Terrace is quintessential West Bronx. Neighbors playing dominoes on the corner, dominos, families waving, saying hello. Residents at 1915 Billingsley had been there, many of them, for 20 to 45 years. Yet 1915 had a history of issues that were well documented with the Department of Buildings, Department of Housing Preservation and Development, and others, including violations specifically relating to facade safety. Facade inspections in the city today stem from the death of a Barnard College student, Grace Gold, in 1979, who was fatally struck by a piece of masonry that fell from the seventh floor of a Manhattan building. Local Law 10 of 1980, and then Local Law 11 of 1998, require the submission of facade technical reports by a qualified exterior wall inspector for every six-story, every building over six stories in the city of New York, every five years, and applies to 16,000 buildings citywide. 1915 failed to file their reports for Cycle Six and Seven, and the most recent report they did file reported that necessary work identified in Cycle Eight was not completed, and so the building had been deemed unsafe. This building owner continuously failed to make necessary repairs to keep their building safe. Over five years prior to the collapse, HPD issued over 350 violations in this building. In 2023 alone, 83 HPD violations were issued, 37 Class C violations, 38 Class B violations, those that are hazardous to health and safety, and eight Class A violations. Of the Class C immediately hazardous violations issued in 2023, only two were corrected. The building currently has 279 HPD violations, 87 of which are Class C violations. The collapse at 1915 Billingsley Terrace is one example of recent building collapses throughout the city, raising concerns about the structural integrity of our building stock. And at 1915, there were warning signs. The public asks ourselves, how well are owners taking care of our oldest buildings? How well are the city agency's systems tracking the health of our structures? Just a year ago, a parking garage right down the street from City Hall collapsed, killing the garage owner and injuring five others. Again, we had, we have a building with a history of violations for repairs that needed to be made to ensure the building's safety, like cracked and loose concrete, and this building held more cars than its intended load capacity. The Department of Buildings also requires building, parking garages to undergo periodic inspections to ensure their structural stability. As leaders concerned with the safety of all New Yorkers in all spaces, we must hone in on our regulations and enforcement practices to ensure that our regulatory agencies, like DOB and HPD, are using all tools in their toolbox to ensure that buildings are safe for New Yorkers. The city is home to over 1 million buildings, with approximately 75% built before 1960. We must ensure that these are all structurally safe and sound. Without that, we risk endangering any person walking by a building or those who live or work inside. When tragedy occurs, we need to provide the families and tenants displaced from their homes with the necessary aid and resources to provide temporary shelter and get them back into their homes as safely and as quickly as possible. With this in mind, today we are hearing my pre-considered bill in relation to establishing a risk-based structural inspection system for buildings. This bill would require the Department of Buildings to create a risk-based inspection program based on a model that looks at high-risk factors that may increase the likelihood that a building is unsafe. Those buildings related, rated with a high-risk score would be subject to inspections, corrective action plans, and a specific timeframe to correct, correct such violations. This bill is targeted to buildings that are more likely to be unsafe and ensures that Department of Buildings proactively inspects these buildings so that owners can take quick actions and take, and make necessary repairs. I want to thank the Department of Buildings for engaging in productive dialogue around the design of this program, and look forward to your feedback, as well as advocates and technical experts who took the time to help us to prepare for today's productive hearing. I'll also briefly touch upon the other bills we will be hearing today, or their sponsors may join us for some remarks. Intro 135 by Councilmember Brooks Powers is in relation to study, a study on structural load-bearing capacity of parking garages. 136 by Brooks Powers is in relation to weight limits for parking structures. 170, sponsored by Councilmember Farias, is regarding increased penalties for DOB violations issued to parking structures. 176 by Councilmember Felice is, involves the creation of a boilerplate annual checklist for parking garage inspections prior to initial annual condition inspections. Intro 231 by Councilmember Hudson increases the frequency of parking structure inspections. 313 by Councilmember Moya requires asbestos surveys and abatements after certain catastrophic events. 607 by Councilmember Krishnan requires tenant relocation services to the same community district, a nearby community district, or the same borough. 608 by Councilmember Krishnan requires HPD to increase tenant relocation services in the event of a vacate order, and 609, sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan, requires HPD to report on the special repair fund. I'd like to thank my team, Sam Cardenas, Chief of Staff, and Kadim Robinson, my Legislative and Communications Director, as well as the Housing and Buildings Committee staff, Taylor Zaloni, Austin Maloney, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, Dan Krup, and Reese Quirota. I would now like to pass it over to no one, myself, because my councilmember colleague is not here. And with that, I'll now turn it to Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before the committee and to respond honestly to the councilmember questions?
Yes.
Thanks, you may begin.
Madam Chair, good morning. This is the second time I'm appearing before you and before the council, and it's no less surreal than the first time. I want to start by thanking you for mentioning the name Grace Gold in your opening statement. I want to add two names to that, Erica Tishman, who also was lost as a result of something flying off a building, and of course, last year Willis Moore. I, I think it's important that we say those three names during this hearing, but say it early on, because while some write editorials looking to do away with Local Law 11, others have a responsibility to ensure that there are no additional Grace Golds and Erica Tishman and certainly Willis Moores. So, so thank you for that. My name is Jimmy Otto, Commissioner for the New York City Department of Buildings. I'm joined at the dais today by Yugal Shamash, who is our Chief Structural Engineer and Assistant Commissioner for Structural Engineering Compliance. Sitting behind me are several members of the department's leadership team, a couple of whom you also might hear from in the course of the hearing. We thank you for holding this important hearing and look forward to discussing the department's efforts to keep buildings and the public safe, as well as the legislation before the committee. Last year, there were two major building incidents, including the collapse of a parking structure at 57 Ann Street in Lower Manhattan in April, which tragically resulted in a fatality, and the partial collapse of a building at 1915 Billingsley Terrace in the Bronx in December. While I will address these incidents in further detail, I will first discuss the regulations that are in place to keep buildings and the public safe, which include the requirements that the facades of certain buildings be inspected periodically, and a more recent requirement that parking structures be inspected periodically. While these requirements obligate building owners to conduct periodic inspections, it should be noted that building owners are always under an ongoing obligation to maintain their buildings in a safe condition. This is an obligation the department takes extremely seriously, as regular building maintenance is key to keeping buildings in a safe condition in order to avoid incidents. Local Law 10 of 1980, which was subsequently amended by Local Law 11 of 1998, established a requirement that the owners of buildings greater than six stories in height have the exterior walls of their buildings inspected every five years. This requirement resulted in the Facade Inspection and Safety Program, FISP. These inspections are conducted by registered design professionals with relevant experience who are approved by the department and hired by building owners. Following such inspections, technical reports describing the results of the inspection must be submitted to the department. Further, the report must make recommendations for maintaining the building's facade and for repairing any unsafe conditions. When an unsafe condition is discovered, steps to protect the public must immediately be taken, and such unsafe conditions must be promptly repaired. Building owners who do not comply with the inspection requirement, who submit late filings or fail to repair unsafe conditions, face penalties that accrue until compliance is achieved. While the department has strengthened its rules pertaining to FISP, a comprehensive review of the program has not been undertaken since the program was originally implemented. As such, the department is in the process of retaining an engineering consulting firm to conduct a comprehensive review of FISP to determine whether any modification to the program is needed to align the program with today's building stock and typology. We look forward to keeping this committee updated on this work and partnering to strengthen the regulations that exist to keep building facades in safe condition. Similar to FISP, Local Law 126 of 2021, which resulted in the most recent comprehensive update to the New York City Construction Codes, established a new requirement that all parking structures be inspected every six years. This new inspection program was closely modeled after FISP, which has a track record of success as it relates to building facade safety. As such, the framework that exists for this program is very similar to the framework that exists for FISP. The inspections under this program are conducted by professional engineers with relevant experience, who are also approved by the department and hired by building owners. This inspection requirement began in 2022 and applied to parking structures in lower, mid, and upper west, the Upper West Side of Manhattan. Parking structures in the rest of Manhattan and Brooklyn must comply with this inspection requirement by 2025, and structures in Queens, the Bronx, and Staten Island must comply with the inspection requirement by 2027. So far, we are seeing promising compliance with the first subcycle of the requirement to conduct parking structure inspections. We have taken steps to strengthen our regulations and hold bad actors accountable in the aftermath, aftermath of the major building incidents that occurred last year. In addition, we are thinking through how we approach enforcement with an eye towards performing inspections based on our wealth of data in order to identify potential issues before they arise. We are also using every tool in our enforcement toolbox to hold bad actors accountable in the interest of keeping buildings and the public safe. However, it is becoming increasingly clear that issuing oath summonses are not always the answer when dealing with bad actor building owners. As such, we are taking enhanced enforcement action where appropriate, which includes working with the New York City Department of Finance to place liens and pursuing legal action against building owners. Following the parking structure collapse in Lower Manhattan in April 2023, we revised our regulations to require that every parking structure be inspected by a professional engineer by August of this year, which significantly sped up the timeline for certain parking structures, again, some of which would not have been inspected until 2027. Additionally, we revised our regulations to require that an engineer be responsible for performing annual observations of such parking structures. Of note, the department has retained a consultant to investigate the cause of the collapse at Ann Street, and the work is still underway. However, preliminarily, the investigation has found that the parking structure did not collapse because it was overloaded. We look forward to keeping this committee updated regarding their findings. Following the partial building collapse in the Bronx in December 2023, we conducted a sweep of all the properties owned by the owner of the building to determine whether any violating conditions existed at such buildings. Further, we moved to swiftly suspend inspection privileges for the professional engineer who conducted the latest facade inspection at the building. We have entered into a settlement agreement with a professional engineer, which resulted in a two-year suspension of their privileges to conduct facade inspections, and have referred them to the New York State Education Department for further potential discipline. We are currently reviewing the existing regulations related to the qualifications of industry professionals who perform such facade inspections to determine if there are any opportunities to strengthen registration requirements for such private facade inspectors in the interest of public safety. While the professional engineer who conducted the most recent facade inspection at the building has been held accountable, we continue to investigate the cause of the collapse to determine if any additional factors contributed to the collapse, and we will keep this committee updated on our findings. Turning now to the legislation before the committee today, the majority of which relate to parking structures. Intro 135 would require the department to perform a study and prepare a report on the structural load-bearing capacity of parking structures for the purpose of evaluating the efficacy of existing load-bearing capacity limits. The New York City Construction Codes prescribe design loads for all structures, including parking structures, which must be used in the design of such structures. The Construction Codes have kept pace with the national standards for vehicle design loads. Special inspections by or under the direct supervision of a registered design professional must be conducted during the construction of such structures to ensure that construction is in accordance with approved designs. Additionally, during the periodic inspections of existing parking structures, where the load capacity of a structure is in doubt, professional engineers must be required to perform load tests to convert, confirm the load-carrying systems in order to properly evaluate the parking structure. While the department is supportive of the intent of this legislation, it does not have the capacity to perform the comprehensive study being proposed in-house, given the various factors that must be taken into consideration in order to complete the study. However, it should be noted that there is an ongoing effort to study the impact of electrical vehicle weights on current design loads for parking structures, which the department is very supportive of. Intro 136 would amend the New York City Construction Code to require that a special inspection agency determine maximum possible weights for each level of parking structure and the sensors be installed for the purpose of enforcing such weights. While the department does not have concerns with parking structure owners or operators calculating the maximum permissible weight for each level of their structure according to design loads established by the New York City Construction Codes, or as informed by the Certificate of Occupancy for their structure, we would defer to parking structure owners or operators on the feasibility of enforcing such limits by installing weight sensors at their structures. Intro 170 would double the penalties associated with certain summonses issued by the department when such summonses are issued in conjunction with parking structures. The department regularly reviews and revises its penalty schedule in order to ensure that penalties are appropriate for the severity of violating conditions and that they have a deterrent effect. Generally, penalty amounts are consistent for the same violating condition and are not varied based on where that violating condition has been discovered. Where the department finds repeated noncompliance or egregious conduct, our penalty schedule is designed so that summonses with increased aggravated penalties may be issued. As such, the department already has a mechanism in place to escalate penalties where appropriate. For these reasons, the department is not supportive of this proposal. Intro 176 would require the department to publish a boilerplate annual observation checklist to be used by parking structure owners or their authorized agents prior to their initial annual inspection. Such parking structure owners or their authorized agents would be required to use such checklists to perform an annual observation by January 1st, 2025. As I mentioned earlier in my testimony, following the collapse of the parking structure in Lower Manhattan last year, the department updated its parking structure inspection rules to require that all parking structures perform an annual observation, which must be performed by a professional engineer by August 1st, 2024. Further, professional engineers will now be required to perform annual observation of parking structures moving forward. Given the recent strengthening of parking structure inspection regulations, this proposal is no longer needed. Intro 231 would require that parking structure inspections be conducted once every four years, beginning in 2028, after the completion of the initial six-year inspection cycle, which began in 2022. Given that the parking structure inspection requirement is relatively new, and that the full cycle has not yet been completed, the department would urge the committee to defer considering this proposal until after the first cycle has been completed, to determine whether any modifications to the program are needed, including how often inspections must be conducted. Intro 313 would require the survey and abatement of asbestos-containing materials by a building owner following the occurrence of a catastrophic, catastrophic event that disturbs the structure of a building. The New York City Construction Codes require that applicants who intend to fully demolish or remove one or more stories of certain buildings certify that the building or part thereof is free from asbestos-containing material before the department issues such permits. In the event of emergency demolition is required, which may be the case when a building is structurally unsafe, New York State regulations provide that a building may be demolished with asbestos-containing materials in place, providing that air monitoring be conducted and that the demolition is controlled per state regulations. In light of such existing regulations, it would be helpful to discuss this proposal further with the committee to better understand the issue it intends to address in light of existing regulations. Lastly, pre-considered intro would, sponsored by the chair, would require the department to create a risk-based inspection program to identify potentially hazardous buildings, which would be subject to proactive inspections. As I mentioned earlier in my testimony, the department is supportive of performing inspections based on its data in order to identify potential issues before they arise. As such, the department is supportive of the goals of this proposal and would welcome the opportunity to discuss it further with this committee to ensure that our goals are aligned. However, we are concerned that being mandated to perform proactive inspections without additional resources will strain our existing inspectorial resources. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today. We welcome any questions you and the committee may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy?
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Sanchez, and members of the Housing and Buildings Committee. My name is Anne Marie Santiago, and I am the Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Enforcement and Neighborhood Services at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I am accompanied today by Assistant Commissioner of Property Management and Client Services, Youngju Kim. HPD's primary enforcement goal each and every day is to ensure that tenants live in safe housing that complies with New York City and New York State Housing Codes. Our housing inspectors respond to hundreds of thousands of complaints, proactively looking for health and safety issues. We dedicate resources to housing court actions, both with and on behalf of tenants, emergency repairs when landlords fail to fulfill their responsibilities, and landlord and tenant education. We invest heavily in enhanced enforcement against landlords whose buildings grossly fail to meet the standards our city has set for safe and healthy housing. As part of our inspection work, HPD may find conditions which are so unsafe that we are required to issue an order to repair or vacate order. This order requires households to relocate from their home and for property owners to conduct repairs if feasible to restore a building or unit to habitability. Having to be relocated from one's home because of a fire or unsafe condition is a traumatic experience, and HPD assesses every situation to ensure that there is no other safe and feasible option for tenants to remain in place. For many years, unlike any other city in the country, New York City has committed, has been committed to assisting households who face these hardships by providing financial support, temporary housing, and aid in returning to their original home. In fiscal year 23, HPD issued, I'm sorry, in calendar year HP, 23, HPD issued 329 fire-related vacates, 243 illegal occupancy vacates, and 39 habitability-related vacates. Habitability vacates are generally issued when there are maintenance conditions beyond the scope of the emergency repair program to address in short order to protect the lives of the occupants. The majority of illegal occupancy vacates are for egress or fire safety issues in cellars and other illegally occupied spaces. HPD code enforcement responds to fires where a significant number of rental units are affected, or in cases where the American Red Cross, ARC, provides services to rental households that might require emergency housing assistance, but no vacate has already been issued by a city agency. In 2001, the agency first created the Special Enforcement Unit to assist with the enforcement of all types of vacates, but primarily for fire response and fire vacate monitoring. When housing inspectors conduct an inspection in response to a fire, their role is to assess if essential services are being provided and whether the building is safe from a habitability standpoint, including whether the apartment is secure and safe from either direct fire damage or damage from extinguishing the fire, water damage, broken windows or doors, as an example. Some fires result in only minor or limited damage, and tenants can safely reoccupy with only the issuance of violations. On the other end of the spectrum, some fires cause extensive damage that requires significance, significant repairs. For example, when roofs sustain major damage or structural elements are affected, significant time will be required to make appropriate repairs. In many buildings, there is a mix of extremely damaged apartments and apartments that need minor repairs, such as fixing broken windows. It is important to recognize that a significant number of fires are not directly caused by the owner's negligence. Working in this space for almost 20 years, HPD has experience with property owners facing challenges when addressing major repairs, including but not limited to obtaining insurance company assessments and payments, coordinating access for tenants to retrieve belongings, hiring appropriate professionals such as architects, engineers, or specialized contractors, scheduling work sequentially among multiple trades and contractors, obtaining materials, and ensuring that various agency filings or utility company requirements are met. HPD intervention has assisted and encouraged many owners to continue to move forward expeditiously with repairs. If we determine that the owner is not making appropriate progress on a reasonable timeline and multiple households receiving housing services are affected, we may initiate legal action. In calendar year 22, HPD conducted post-vacate building visits in response to more than 80% of the fire vacates issued, and 74% of those vacates have been rescinded. We also initiated litigation seeking an order to correct on 27 buildings, which were not moving forward with repairs in a timely manner, and 80% of those vacates were rescinded. Having the flexibility to respond to different building situations is key to the effectiveness of our process. HPD is also committed to providing immediate assistance to families affected by vacate orders. Under a contract with HPD, the American Red Cross responds to vacates, offering immediate emergency housing assistance and a direct referral into HPD's emergency housing process. In fiscal year 23, ARC responded to 885 fire incidents that resulted in HPD providing services. This includes providing immediate housing services for almost 3,000 families. This fiscal year through March, ARC has responded to more than 646 fire incidents, providing immediate emergency housing services for over 2,000 families, 2,100 families. For families require, requiring longer-term housing assistance, households registered through Emergency Housing Services and are assigned a placement at one of our family living centers located in Manhattan, Brooklyn, and the Bronx. Singles and adult household placements are made at single-room occupancy buildings in Manhattan, the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens. Over the years, EHS has become increasingly flexible with the requirements to obtain assistance and works with tenants to obtain documents needed. assistance and works with tenants to obtain documents needed to prove identity and residency at the affected building, which are the only requirements for assistance. The EHS case management team works with client households to develop and update rehousing plans and provides direct support and guidance around all aspects of returning home and/or finding new housing. I would now take a moment to speak to the HPD-related bills being considered today. Intro 608 details certain actions the city must take following the issuance of vacate orders by the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, the Fire Department, and HPD. As discussed, HPD is committed to supporting displaced residents and working to ensure that their units are repaired to facilitate their return home. While we are happy to discuss how to improve on our process, we have concerns about some provisions in this bill. For one, the bill that we, the bill requires that we initiate 7A proceedings when corrections are not made within a short timeframe. As has been our practice, we believe that executing focused and flexible enforcement, where we work collaboratively with owners and consider all of our available tools, is the most effective way to achieve our goals for both the city and the residents of the buildings. The 7A program is only one tool, and that program is focused on negligent property owners who allow tenants to live in the most distressed conditions and who fail to be responsive to other enforcement efforts. We also have concerns about the requirement in this introduction that HPD facilitate access to apartments for residents while vacates are in place, from both health and safety and legal perspectives. Intro 607 would require HPD to make best efforts to provide relocation services as close to a household's vacated home as possible. Many of you have worked with HPD on tragic occasions when people were displaced, and we all understand the hardship that tenants experience when having to relocate far from their home. Although our network of temporary housing for both families and children, with children and adult families or single adults is limited, we do our best to accommodate the needs of our families. These needs include not only the location of the temporary housing that is available, but household size and any other special needs that the family may have. Finding new locations willing to provide temporary space to families or individuals on an as-needed basis, or keeping units available specifically for those displaced households without knowing what the need will be, when we know so many New Yorkers need for permanent housing is challenging, is a tremendous struggle. As you all know, the vacancy rate for the lowest-income New Yorkers is 1%, and many of the families we serve through EHS would fall into that cohort of renters. Our resources are better directed to helping these families find new housing. To that end, HPD is exploring additional strategies to assist families with their housing search. Intro 609 requires that HPD report on funds collected and dispersed through the Special Repair Fund. Through research and consultation with the Law Department, we have determined that this code section was never implemented and is not legally enforceable. We are happy to work with the council to remove this statute. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today about HPD's current work to support New Yorkers affected by the issuance of a vacate order. Over the past few months, the council has introduced multiple pieces of legislation which would support tenants affected by vacate orders, and we remain committed to working with you to improve what we do to better serve New Yorkers in need. We are happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. So next, I just want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Abilis and Councilmember Abreu, and I am going to read some remarks by Councilmember Selena Brooks-Powers on her bills being introduced, I mean, being heard. She wasn't able to join us today, and I'll read her questions before moving forward with the hearing. So from Councilmember Brooks-Powers. Last spring, just a few blocks from here, a parking garage on Ann Street collapsed, which killed one and injured five others. This tragedy raised urgent questions in the minds of New Yorkers across all five boroughs about the safety of our parking garages. The city's goal must be to prevent something like this from ever happening again, and we need to ensure that our standards and procedures guarantee the structural integrity of our garages, that no New Yorker needs to fear parking in a New York City garage. I'm excited that today the council will have the opportunity to discuss with the administration how we're working to guarantee the safety in all our garages. I look forward to hearing how DOB has responded and addressed concerns raised by the Ann Street collapse. Thank you for sharing. Also, I also look forward to a full hearing on the two pieces of legislation I sponsored on today's agenda, introducing introductions 135 and 136. 135 would require DOB to conduct a load-bearing capacity study for parking garages. DOB would be required to assess factors like the size, age, material, and structural design of parking structures and come up with recommendations based on their findings. Intro 136 would require garage owners to weigh cars seeking to park in the garage and refuse to park a vehicle if doing so would mean the collective weight of vehicles on that level would exceed the maximum limit. I look forward to a robust conversation about these proposals and to working alongside my colleagues to advance safety measures that would ensure the integrity of cities' garages. I would like to extend my thanks to Chair Sanchez for convening this hearing and for advocacy on behalf of New Yorkers citywide. Her questions are, and we can start with these, what caused the Ann Street garage collapse? What investigative steps has the administration taken to better understand this incident? In the aftermath of the collapse, what steps has the administration taken to ensure the structural integrity of parking garages citywide? And does the administration support intros 135 and 136, which you already answered? So just the first two. Thank you.
Madam Chair, you want me to respond to those questions then?
Yes, thank you.
So let me, let me just repeat one line from the testimony, because I think it's, unfortunately, it's the most I can say about the Ann Street situation, because it continues to be under investigation. But it also sort of, I say it cognizant of the images that we all saw, particularly of the roof that was collapsed with the many cars on top of it, but the line from the testimony and the, what I can offer the committee today is that that collapse did not happen because Ann Street was overloaded. I will have Assistant Commissioner Shimash speak in more detail about the PIPs program, the periodic inspection of the parking structures. But with respect to Ann Street, it is, continues to be investigated by our partners in law enforcement, Department of Investigation, the Manhattan District Attorney's Office. And so we, we are hesitant to say anything that interferes with that investigation. We can tell you that after the tragedy, we hired an outside entity, Lyra, to do a top-to-bottom investigation simultaneous to what our law enforcement partners were doing. They have done that work for the last year. They have finished their preliminary report, which in turn has been delivered to DOI and to the District Attorney's Office. So I can't get into more detail about the specifics of the cause, other than to repeat again that it being overloaded was not the cause. In terms of what we are doing and how, or did post Ann Street, I think Assistant Commissioner Shimash could get into more details if you want.
Just a summary and just maybe one point of clarification. In terms of 57 Ann Street, in terms of the loading, the building was not overloaded. That has been established using the allowable loads in the Certificate of Occupancy that was issued by the Department of Buildings, so I just wanted to clarify that. In terms of the PIPs program, periodic inspection of parking structures, that was, as the Commissioner said, modeled after FISP or Local 11 or Local 10 of 1980. We know, based on various studies, that that program works, and it, and PIPs was modeled directly from that program. It was modified because it is a engineering evaluation from FISP to only allow professional engineers to do the inspections and the reporting. So that is, that is a big difference between the two programs, and I just wanted to highlight that. But in terms of the sweeps that we did post 57 Ann Street, we did about six different cycles of inspections that we performed. The first one was based on the operators, based on the operators, Little Man Parking. We did an inspection of all the garages that they had in New York City. We performed that sweep, and then we performed sweeps on other parking structures that had Class 1 violations.
I want to give Igal a chance to find some of the specific data points. Let me just repeat a couple of things, Madam Chair. So we are early in this program. There are three sub-cycles, as I mentioned in the testimony, the first of which was due in December of last year. So those reports were due at the end of the year, and we have received a significant percentage of those reports, not as high, I think, as the, as the committee might like or laypeople would like, but relative to what the agency's experience was on the PIPs, on the facade inspection, it's actually higher than when we started the initial stages of the facade inspection program. The subsequent cycles are due, again, at the end of 25, 25 and 27. The, we have around a 60% compliance rate in this first sub-cycle. Those, and we continue to get those reports in daily. For those who fail to meet the deadline, they receive a monthly violation of $1,000, and at the end of the year, I believe it's another $5,000 fine. And, you know, we are watching closely the, those reports, studying those reports. But again, I just want to be clear that after Ann Street, we wanted to get eyes on all of these structures before the 25 deadline, before the 27 deadline, and that's when we added the rule about a professional engineer getting eyes on it and getting us a report by August 1st of 2024. With the numbers that Igal was looking for, after Ann Street, we looked at 17 of the parking structures owned by that operator, Little Man. We then did a series, yeah, we then did a series, and Igal will give you the specific numbers. Using our data, using certain search terms to tailor the universe, we then did a series of five more rounds of sweeps looking at parking structures. And Igal can talk to you about the numbers of violations we issued. We issued several partial stop-work orders.
As the Commissioner said, we did six rounds of, or six phases of inspections. The entire summary of that inspection, including the first phase that I mentioned earlier, was we had inspected 302 parking structures. We issued violations at 161 of those locations. We issued partial or full vacate orders on 13 of those locations. In total, we issued 237 Oath summonses, 103 DOB violations, 29 of the sites were referred to our engineering unit, and 111 orders were issued to the owners of the parking structures to hire a professional engineer and submit a thorough inspection and evaluation of the building. Phase one of that sweep was the operator of the parking garage. There we inspected 17 garages, and I can get in more detail if you want. Phase two, we inspected 62 parking garages that had Class 1 violations previously issued by the department. Phase three, we inspected 53, 54 parking garages, excuse me. And phase four, we issued, we inspected another 32 parking garages. Phase five, another 23 locations, and phase six, another 80 locations. All of these locations were picked using a variety of data points that we used, searching through our biz or building information system.
Great. Thank you, thank you so much for that. As you cited those numbers, my eyebrows keep going higher and higher. What kind of, what kind of violations, can you give us some, you know, layperson's examples of the kind of violations that led to 237 oath summonses and the numbers that you cited?
The majority of those violations were failed-to-maintain violations, whether those were Class 2 or Class 1 violations. The orders for, that were issued, the majority of those were for the owner to hire a professional engineer, do their evaluations, and submit the PIPs compliance reports by an earlier date than they were required to. And those would be the full evaluation reports and the compliance reporting. That is an enhanced report from the initial observations that we're looking for on August 1st. Those would be the full compliance reports.
Thank you. So in your testimony, Commissioner, you mentioned that in response to the Ann Street collapse, you are speeding up the timeline to conduct the first wave of annual observation by August 1st, 2024. Do we think we will make that for all 4,500 garages across the city?
Yeah, again, so there is the underlying PIPs program, what the deadlines of subcycle 8, 23, subcycle 3, 25, subcycle 17. After that situation at Ann Street, obviously, we all were in agreement, we need to get eyes on what's happening. That's runway 3 and 4. I can't tell you, we didn't build out the process of dealing now to begin to accept those reports, but what I've discovered in almost all of Seth DOB is that when their deadlines, building owners and professionals act like high school students with their term paper, and there's a lot of late-night work, and reports tend to come in abundance at the deadline. So I can't tell you what those numbers will be, but for folks who don't...
I'm sorry, Commissioner, your mic isn't on.
For folks who don't, sorry about that. I had a good line about term papers and high school students. But, but for those who don't respond, there will be a penalty structure again. Listen, the bottom line for all of this, for the theme, both from the HPD side and the DOB side, and I think from the council side, is maintenance. This is all about maintaining these buildings and preventing us from talking about tragedies. That's the point of these laws, and I will reuse a line I said to you, Madam Chair, in the, in the budget hearing, and that's paraphrasing our DEP Commissioner. We don't want, we don't want their money, we want their compliance. This is all about compliance. And we believe that the facade inspection program, again, what the parking program is modeled off, when you look at the compliance rates now, we believe it is a good program. We think we can do more on that front, and switching, if I may, to the Billingsley situation and... and forgive me for the many acronyms, but to do the facade inspection, you have to have certain qualifications and receive a qualification from the agency. You have to be a QE, a Qualified Exterior Wall Inspection, Inspector, without looking at my notes. And to do parking structures, you have to be a qualified parking structure inspector. Three years of structural engineering for the parking, certain number of years for the, seven years for the, for the facades. That privilege of being a QE or a QPSI is something that we think we need to look at and perhaps have something like an annual, where you don't just get to keep it in perpetuity, or we need to have an annual review. Because we rely so heavily on our licensed professionals to do the work to ensure that these buildings are in fact in, in good repair. So while we think we have good programs in place, we continue to look at ways of strengthening them.
In terms of the compliance by August 1st, as the Commissioner said, we have about a, close to a 60% compliance rate for the first sub-cycle, which would be about, we have 1,046 buildings in that sub-cycle, which would leave about 3,400 buildings that need to file that early August 1st observation report. We performed numerous outreach events to industry folks, architect, engineering firms. I was just at the Queen's Chamber of Commerce last week doing a presentation. I think I mentioned August 1st date about 17 times at that presentation. So we are putting that date out there as much as we can. We are outreach to ownership groups, industry groups, to make sure that they understand that we're taking that date very seriously.
Madam Chair, if I may just, one, one other thing. The maintenance of these buildings, keeping them in good repair is the owner's responsibility, our job at DOB to kind of keep them on point. But if the consumer can help us out, and that is, I'm, I'm speaking in terms of the parking structures, I, I want to get a plug-in for the, the map that the agency has, where you can go on the link, look at any parking structure, see its history, see if it's issued the report, if it was, falls within the geographic area of Lower Manhattan. And I would just ask consumers, I understand everyone is in a, in a rush every day, and you, you go to the, the parking structure perhaps that's close to work or, but, but be an educated consumer. We, we, we haven't put As and Bs and Cs and Ds on the parking structures like restaurants, but if you see they haven't issued the report to the agency, don't give them your money. See if there's a, a garage close by. We will continue to look for sticks and ways of holding all owners to be accountable, but if the, if the consumer can be educated and, and not frequent any parking garage who has yet to issue us a report in that first sub-cycle, it can only help.
Thank you. Commissioner, you mentioned, you both mentioned, yeah, this, this number, this great number of summonses and violations and fines issued to, to parking structures. And as we'll talk about, I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to ask questions, but as we'll talk about a little bit later, you know, compliance around, around Local Law 11 and FISB buildings also isn't perfect. Are these fees and fines, are they leanable at this time by the Department of Buildings?
Well, there, there's some of our, and if Deputy Commissioner Patino wants to come to join, some of our penalties, some of our violations are leanable. We are currently working with the Department of Finance to expand the scope of, of the collection of some, but we're going to need some legislative help to expand those. Do you want to, please, come up. We, we want to, we want to expand the universe that are leanable, and we probably are going to need some legislative help.
Please raise your right hand. You're firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
You begin.
Just to add to that, so the department does have some limited lien authority in its code currently, that's primarily limited to residential buildings, but there's certain factors that need to be taken into consideration before an oath summons that's converted into a judgment can be leanable against the building. And that includes the number of units in a residential building, the number of outstanding debt. As the Commissioner mentioned, we're certainly interested in expanding upon that lien authority so that we can use that enforcement tool where it's appropriate, including to address bad actors, egregious behavior. But we would have to check to see whether any FISB-related summonses or facade-related summonses have been turned into liens previously, and we can get back to you on that.
Thank you, thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. Just following up on, on questions from your testimony, and then I'll turn it over to colleagues for their questions. You, you mentioned that the agency is interested in, has started the process of conducting a comprehensive review of the FISB program. Do you have a timeline for, for this review?
Yeah, yes. So this is part of the Get Sheds Down initiative, and it's something, frankly, that we fought for at the agency. We, and this, I guess, hasn't been in print before, so this is the first time, I think, we're talking about it publicly, but we've brought on the renowned engineering firm Thornton Tomasetti to lead this work. We, credit to Deputy Commissioner Gus Sarakis for the idea of pushing for an emergency contract. We are close to having that contract finalized, and we hope their work will begin on July of this year. It will be 12 months' worth of work, and we will get deliverables. We want them to look at four things: regulatory review, material testing research, looking at our FISB data, and then make, make recommendations. So we want to look at our existing rules, we want to compare them to other jurisdictions, we want to look at, look at the housing typology, look at material types to see, perhaps, instead of a one-size-fits-all of five-year cycle for every building, maybe depending on age, size, material types, we have a different, a different set of, of numbers. We have an incredible amount of data from around 3,500 QE reports. We want them to dive deep into that data, and they will come back with particular, and we will, obviously, will make these findings available to you and the committee as, as quickly as we can. And again, I, I, I'm not looking to pick a fight with anyone, but I read again recently an editorial saying we should repeal Local Law 11. I understand the frustration about sheds. Local Law 11 isn't about sheds, per se. Local Law 11 is about maintenance of building. And for those of us with the responsibility of ensuring safety, we think it's a much sounder approach to take a look A to Z at, at the existing law and come back with an intelligent set of, you know, perhaps modifications. We're very aware that there was a council bill to change the cycle. I think this could either bolster that bill, or we could work with the sponsor of that bill to say, hey, look at this report, we think the number should be X, Y, or Z.
Got it. Thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner. A quick notice for anyone who needs translation services, we do have Spanish translations. I don't know how you access them, though. Okay, and we will let you know how to access them. Cualquier persona que necesite traducción, tenemos traductores aquí, y le vamos a avisar cómo pueden accederlo en un momento. Thank you, Commissioner. Last one, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Abreu. So for Ann Street, the Ann Street collapse, you mentioned an engineer was hired, and then you, you also said in, in Q and A that the preliminary report was shared with DOI and the DAs. Have these findings been finalized? Is this going to be shared? Are these findings going to be shared with the public? And more broadly, and, you know, with, in connection to 1915 Billingsley, understanding that's also under, under investigation, what is the, the process of an investigation and the timeline?
Okay. So 1915 Billingsley is different to the extent that we are doing an internal investigation. Assistant Commissioner Shimash can give you more specificity on, on where we're at at that, but to give you a rough ballpark, sometime by the summer, we hope to get to you that report that will include our findings and what we believe happened. Again, Ann Street, we hired the consultant, they have done with their preliminary report. Can we talk about when potentially we would be able to provide that to the public? I assume it's also predicated on, predicated on the work of the DA's office, but is there a final report? That's the, so this, this is, can you explain that part, and then?
So in terms of the difference between the preliminary and the final report, what we had as we were doing the, as HPD was doing the demolition of 57 Ann Street on behalf of the city, we took material samples from the building, and we had those samples analyzed. That took a little bit of time, as you can imagine, getting materials through the demo process and then shipping that off to a lab. So the preliminary report addressed all the findings that we had to date. All the material testing has been completed, and they are doing their final structural evaluation of the pre-collapse building. What they've determined to date is that the building was not overloaded. It could support the intended loads of the cars in the garage and of the CFO live load requirements. The rest of the structural analysis is being completed, they are finalizing that, and then there is an internal review that happens on that final report, and then we share that with our folks at Law Department. The same process will have to happen for the Billingsley report. The Bronx DA is still investigating that collapse as well, so we will have to follow that same process as well.
So in, in general, in, in terms of what's in your hands, right, understanding we can't, we don't know the, how the DAs are going to, what their timelines are going to be, how long does it take for the Department of Buildings to conduct one of these analyses?
The 1915 Billingsley report on our end should be complete by early summer. That is our goal, including all the internal review processes. So the collapse happened mid-December, and we will be complete by early summer, so that's about six months. Ann Street was a much more in-depth investigation, and that's why we hired an outside consultant. There were a lot of potential causes for the collapse on Ann Street, where the Billingsley collapse, we had almost immediately identified the cause of the collapse at Billingsley. Ann Street, we had a lot of balls in the air that we were juggling in terms of what the potential causes were. We hired Lyra, who's a, who's a well-known forensic engineering and evaluation firm, to perform that investigation and oversee the demolition operations as well, and, and have full-time representation on site. So that was something that, in terms of manpower and in terms of the expertise that they brought to the table for Ann Street, was something that we thought would be very helpful for us.
Thank you. And, and just to note that at 1915, there are small businesses on that first level that have not been able to access insurance payments because the, the cause is under investigation formally, so, you know, it's impacting people, so that's why I ask about the timeline.
Madam Chair, I will say publicly what I've said privately. I, I appreciate the collaboration that we've had with you. I know how impactful this has been for your constituents and for you. I know how important this is for you, and you have my commitment as soon as we are, and I understand the need to get this done, and, and we are working as quickly as we can to deliver that, and as, I promise you, it is on the front burner.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Abreu. I'm sorry, and I would like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Chris Nunn.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Sanchez, nice to see you, Commissioner. In January 2024, it was reported that 400 property owners failed to submit required engineering inspection reports. Could you provide the updated numbers on this to date, on how many property owners have failed to submit the reports?
Oh, are we talking about the parking?
Parking structures.
Parking structures, right. So again, the compliance rate is around 58, 59%. Those, and we can do a breakdown of what the reports that came in, what they showed. It's a mixed bag of safe, unsafe, and safe with continued repair and engineering monitoring. Those entities who have failed to submit the report are receiving, accruing summonses, violations, a thousand a month each month, first of the month. And we continue to do outreach, we can do, continue to do social media, to whatever extent that helps, to shame those who haven't, to point out those who have. Tried to educate the public again to not frequent, not to say that they're inherently unsafe, but just don't give them your hard-earned money. Hit them in the, hit them in the pocketbook. Do you have any, yeah?
In terms of specific numbers, what we have to date in terms of accepted reports, we have 113 unsafe, 183 Srem, the middle ground, and 186 safe. We have reports that were recently submitted to us that are still pending our review in terms of plan, exam, and inspection, that's 129 of those. Since the beginning of this year, or since, since the, the deadline, we've received over 100 reports from building owners for their parking structure compliance. In terms of the compliance rate, as the Commissioner said, we're at 58%. As I said previously, we modeled this specifically after FISB. Just for reference, the last complete cycle for FISB, our compliance rate is at 97%. We expect the, the PIPs compliance rate to reach that level or even higher, based on, on the history that we have from FISB.
Thank you for that. I understand and appreciate that the agency is doing everything that it, that it can to find and encourage participation and compliance, but at what point does the city just, I mean, can you take over? At what point can, can we do something about it? If the compliance is so low and, and the deterrent is not working?
Yeah. Listen, I appreciate your frustration, and in March, in the preliminary budget hearing, the, the Chair and, and we at DOB engaged in a conversation, I think we are all in agreement that we have to hone in on bad actors, and I think we're in agreement that this agency needs some additional tools. We need some additional sticks. At some point, issuing violations isn't, isn't enough, and that's why we've, we've spoken with the Chair about, and as, as she mentioned in her questioning, the notion of expanding our lien power. Not that liens are the panacea, but, but we need additional tools to ensure compliance. And unfortunately, there is a reality that we, we have to face, that there are certain bad actors, and... that there are certain bad actors and, you know, we could point out, I'm sure HPD could point out, and there's certain that have accrued, you know, astronomical numbers. We testified after HPD in March and it was right after the news came out when the arrest was made. And, you know, and we certainly understood and I think the Chair didn't try, hide her exuberance about that step. We need additional tools to ensure compliance. And where, and I made this clear to the Chair, we are open to having conversations with her and we appreciate her willingness to work with us to figure out what those tools are.
Thank you, Commissioner. One more question, Chair. In the last two, and by the way, I support giving the agency the power it needs to expand that legal authority because we know that we got to increase participation and compliance. And my last question is, to the extent that you have this, how much has DOB collected from parking structure-related violations in the last fiscal year and in the last two fiscal years?
So we didn't, we haven't started to collect on this program because, again, the first sub-cycle ended in December. So we don't have any, although we have other numbers we could point to and we could get to you about just violations in general that we've issued. But as part of the PIPs program, the failing to report in that first sub-cycle, that started January 1st of this year and those violations are beginning to accrue.
And for, and for the most frequent issue violation, is that failure to maintain for parking structures or is that different?
That's different. So the failure to maintain violation is an inspectorial violation. If we see a condition, we will, we will identify it as a maintenance condition. In terms of the reporting, we'll issue a failed to file violation. And that's, as the Commissioner said, the $1,000 a month plus the $5,000 annual for $17,000 total per year.
May I say one other thing? Because I think your question deserves an even broader response. So we talked about we need more sticks. But what we need to do as an agency and what I feel compelled to do and to figure out a path, a financial path, we need to go, part of this agency needs to go on offense. We, to a large degree, are a complaint-based agency. We get complaints in from 3011, from elected officials, from communities. We go out. We need to free up a group that is on offense, that looks at, and we touched on this in the budget hearing, that looks at, to what the Chair's pre-considered reso, pre-considered intro does, to look at high-risk locations, to use predictive analytics to identify potential problematic buildings beforehand, to figure out all the data we have and HPD has and other entities have about bad actors and proactively go out, to have a team that routinely goes out and looks at open Class Ones, our most serious violations, and routinely goes out before that existing Class One turns into the next tragedy. That's something on us that we have to do. And I have to figure out how to secure the resources and how to get that done. But part of this agency needs to be on offense and stopping these things to the best that we can or attempting to stop as many of these things as we can.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Commissioner. And I'd now like to turn it over to Councilmember Aviles and then we'll hear remarks on his legislation and questions from Councilmember Krishna.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you. Good afternoon. I have a couple of questions, some on specific instances and then just generally. So maybe I'll start with a particular situation in my district, 150 Bay 22nd Street. This is a six-unit family rental, it's a six-family rent stabilized building that was issued a full vacate order in 2023 after the landlord who had taken over the building several months before, put holes in the side of the building, making the building structurally unsound. The landlord did this himself. DOB came in, issued a vacate order. What is happening now is the landlord clearly wants to get rid of this building. He has put in for a demolition permit, which DOB seems to be willingly to grant him. Now, the challenge and problem we have here is that this is a rent stabilized building, right? Six units that would be lost forever once this building is demolished. It is clear the intent of the landlord here. He made it unsound so that he could get his way to demolish this building and rid himself of these six rent stabilized units. So I guess I'd like to understand why DOB is allowing the landlord to utilize the law to his personal benefit that will displace six families and why DOB is not engaging and coordinating with DHCR to ensure that this does not happen and those tenants are in fact protected.
So I'm going to have the Assistant Commissioner perhaps speak to a couple of points. But we are cognizant of the phenomena, and I put that in quotes, of some building owners trying to escape their rent stabilized by allowing it to, by neglect. So what I will say to you, Councilmember, is we will happily sit with you. And if there are other locations in your district that you think this is potentially happening or it's the early stages, we will sit with you and work with you. I don't have an answer for you as we sit here right now. I want to have the Assistant Commissioner Shimash speak to it. But I want you to walk away, understanding that we will sit and work with you together. If you have ideas that are things that you think that we should be doing, we're happy to have that conversation.
Well, I welcome that. I'd love for DOB not to provide this landlord with what he wants, which is a permit to permanently displace these families and take advantage of the privilege that he has of ownership in this city. So I think stopping any demolition order and we can figure out collectively what to do to support these tenants, also make sure that this landlord does not, this is not his, that the city does not allow this type of business to operate here unattended. So I'd be happy to follow up with you about that. Just moving on. Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Oh, sure, sure. Sorry.
Just in terms of specifics at that location, 100% agree with you in terms of ownership. It was a clear lack of maintenance in terms of the building and long-term neglect. We issued previous violations to that building owner. And as the Commissioner spoke, that was what we could do in terms of, so we issued numerous previous violations. We were very cognizant of the situation. We did not issue any orders for demolition of the building. On the contrary, we issued an immediate emergency declaration, which our sister agency, HPD, executed to shore that building to make sure that the owner doesn't get what they're looking for.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll definitely follow up because we have a clear example of a bad actor who's exploiting a system and there's going to have lifetime impacts for those six families that we want to ensure are protected. Can I ask for another instance? What tools does HPD have to encourage building owners to more quickly make repairs and to move tenants back into their homes?
Thank you, Councilmember. As I talked about a little bit in my testimony, we do have a special enforcement unit that is really focused on, most particularly, fire vacates to work with owners. We know that there is always going to be a timeline for repair. And again, depending on the seriousness of the fire. In most cases, owners work with us and we're able to move forward and get restoration. In those cases where they aren't, we do utilize housing court and we do go to housing court and initiate litigation. And that's really dependent on the cooperation of the owner. If an owner tells that, you know, we, when our staff go there and most, many of our staff have been with this unit for quite some time. So they have a fairly good sense of what it should take, you know, an average timeline for the type of damage that they see in the building. And once we see, again, especially in large fires, in fires in rent stabilized buildings where a lot of folks have been displaced and are receiving emergency housing services, we make those referrals and we go to housing court. And again, the majority of cases that we initiate in housing court based on this do result in restoration.
Thank you. In terms of your testimony, just to follow up on this, you noted in the calendar year HPD had issued the, all those numbers. And then a few sentences later, you go back to talk about the prior year's resolution. Is there a reason why you don't have the calendar fiscal 23s?
We can certainly provide those numbers to you, Councilmember.
A disjunction and the problem here and the resolution here is not over the same timeframe. So we'd love to see like actually what it is in fiscal 22 and fiscal 23. On that note, if I may, Chair, just to wrap up this. Is it customary, so in, on a property in my district, 408 59th Street, there was a fire in one unit. Eventually, the building inspector, when he was there, he was on the ground for eight hours with the residents, put a full vacate order on the building. This was maybe last year or the year before. I can't remember. The inspector said, you know, it's one unit, but half of the building is really fine. It should be cosmetic. What I saw happen in the year since is the building's owner, along with his family members, continued to reside in the building. Is that legal when there is a full vacate order on a building?
The vacate order is really for the, for the rental tenants. We do recommend that owners do not live in vacated buildings. It is, you know, from our perspective, not a safe location. But I can certainly look into the specifics of this building to see what our unit has. I'm not familiar with this.
There are some interesting peculiarities here that I'd love to talk to you offline about. And some of that may have been remedied, the truth. I haven't seen it recently. But there was a real push to, the tenants really knew that they would never be able to go back and retrieve their stuff because they had some very difficult relationship with the owner who, from their estimation, wanted to clear out the building anyway. So it was a great, a fortuitous event. I had one more question. Oh, this is related to the vacate order. When it's issued, how often does HPD conduct a follow-up with the building owners to ensure that the corrections are being made? Like, what's the timeframe of that? And I'm sure, I'm sure they're different because every circumstance is probably unique. But generally, what, what does that look like?
For, and I'll talk about calendar year now because we wanted to mostly stick with calendar year since 2023 is a full calendar year and not the fiscal year. We follow up with multiple inspections in about 80% of the cases where we issue either fire or habitability vacates. And that entails both field visits as well as phone outreach from our staff. And again, in most cases, owners are just as devastated by the fire as the tenants are and look to us for assistance with, you know, what do I need to do now? So I think that that is a good relationship for us to have. There are always your outliers and there are always your people who are, as you suggested, take advantage of a situation that maybe was not their making, but is now what they see as an opportunity. So certainly, this process allows us to suss out those people and focus on those buildings.
So is that, is that, is there like a three-month check-in, a six-month? Like, what does that time interval generally look like?
The initial check-in is very quick. And then we start to determine what the milestone should be. So again, in a bigger fire, work may not start in three months. In a smaller fire, you may expect that the work is all completed at the end of three months. So it's really dependent on the extent of the fire, the size of the building, the resources of the owner and their willingness to cooperate.
Got it. I appreciate that and thank you both. And Commissioner, to you, last thing on the Bay 22nd property, the tenants there have also not had access to their units to get their vitals, their vital stuff that they need, which is another issue I'd like to address offline with you all. But, but thank you. And yes, there are many good owners out there who are doing the right thing and just as devastated, we have seen that. But we're here to make sure everybody is above board. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Aviles. Quick follow-up from me, and by the way, they asked for extra time. I have to give it because how much extra time have you given me at your hearings? Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Aviles. Just a quick follow-up on vacates, and this is for both agencies. The determination that vacate orders should be withdrawn, do your agencies publicly disclose the analysis you conduct to determine that the vacate order should be withdrawn? Because we know from looking at the internet, thank you, internet, that it is not the resolution of violations that results in the lifting of vacate orders. So how is it that you decide and what is public facing?
From the DOB standpoint, the application, the permit and then the sign-off of that application, which all are publicly available, are required to lift the vacate.
It's on, it's on DOB's website.
Yes, ma'am.
I will be requesting those coordinates. Thank you.
No problem.
Deputy Commissioner?
Thank you. Yes, our vacate orders themselves are on the website and they list the underlying reasons for the vacate. So it will say fire damage, it will say no electricity, whatever are the reasons for the vacate. In order to have a vacate listed, a property owner does need to file with the agency a dismissal request. When we go out, we look at all of the conditions that were cited on the vacate order and the violations for those apartments or areas. And the violation should be closed for, not the entire building. If the vacate was for apartment two, that's what we're looking at in order to lift the vacate.
Got it. So in both, with both agencies, the filing by the owner is made publicly available? And then the agency's?
The filing by the owner is not publicly available at this time. The, the application is basically the regular violation dismissal request form. The form itself is available on the website, but not the completed form from the owner. But the inspection results, the fact that the vacate was rescinded, is available on our website.
And DOB?
All the, all the plans and all the applications, all the permitting process are completely transparent. Everything on our public portal through DOB Now is publicly available.
Thank you. Councilmember Krishna?
Good morning. First, thank you so much, Chair Sanchez, for today's hearing and for all your great work as our, as our Housing Chair. Good morning to you all. Commissioner, good to see you. I have not congratulated you in person since you were appointed. So congratulations. Glad to see you there at the helm of DOB and look forward to our work together to continue to work together. And Deputy Commissioner, same. Good to see you too and look forward to our many years of continued work together. And now in a different role for me as well. I want to thank you all for your testimony today. I did, before asking my questions, if the Chair would allow, just wanted to say a few words about my bills in particular, intro 607, 608 and 609. This is the reason why we all in the council are supporting the Back Home Act, which is a package of bills that includes my legislation, also Councilmember John Gutierrez's legislation, is because, as you're hearing from all of us, these are crisis situations. Taking a step back, housing is the most urgent crisis we face in the city, as you all know, for a number of different reasons and it's linked to every other crisis we face. But if tenants are, and one of the most effective ways to solve that crisis is to make sure that we can keep tenants in their homes so they aren't displaced by harassment, by fires, by harassment after fires, however you want to think about it. One of the biggest problems when it comes to keeping tenants in their homes is when they are vacated. Because when they're vacated, you would think in those situations that every city agency would be able to descend, to find a way to get them home as quickly as possible. And understanding that you all are making the best efforts you can, the fact of the matter is that simply isn't happening right now. I know, not only from being a council member, but for my many years as a civil rights lawyer for tenants, representing tenants, who you'll hear from today too, in this situation. representing tenants, who you'll hear from today too, in this situation, where once they're vacated, it takes not just months, but years for them to get back home. In that time, they will be displaced and relocated to a shelter that could be far flung across the borough. I had one case in particular, I remember, where an immigrant family was in a shelter many neighborhoods away with three young girls, who also had to travel very far to get back to their school. And so once they're displaced, they are displaced not just from their homes, but from their communities. And that's only where the trouble begins. Then for them to get back in, as you saw with the 89th Street tenants in Jackson Heights, once there's, whether it's been landlord harassment and quite literally destruction of buildings, or fires that have been created and landlords delaying on the repair work afterwards, for tenants to get back in, to get their things, their belongings, takes so long, months oftentimes. And sometimes when they come back in, their buildings have been, their apartments have been ransacked, their homes ransacked, and their things are missing. I ask all of you to imagine for a second, if you were made homeless overnight. That's what literally happens in these situations, overnight to the morning, rendered homeless. And in the trauma of that, all of your things are still stuck at your house, basic necessities to live your life, to support your family, and you're not able to get access to those things for one reason or another. Compounding the trauma they face, compounding being homeless and forcibly and violently displaced from their homes, they simply can't move on with their lives if quite literally their belongings are still in their homes and they don't have access to them. And then, the entire struggle drags on for months, for years in housing court, because we all know it. I certainly know it. I've witnessed it with my clients and fought through those delays. Where proceedings that should take days in those situations, take years. Trials get pushed off indefinitely. And in that time, tenants are still out of their homes. And landlords are banking on the fact that this is a game of attrition, where if tenants can be waited out, if tenants are waited out long enough, they'll give up and walk away. And then when you have rent stabilized buildings, a crucial form of affordable housing, in those situations, the landlords will take those buildings, have to gut rehab them because many of them have full vacates on them, and then as I've seen and represented tenants in these situations, rebuild luxury market rate units that they rent out for three or four times the price. And when tenants come back home, they say, the building no longer exists and it's no longer under rent stabilization, when that's not true. The tenants have never compromised their rights in the first place. That is the magnitude of the problem we're dealing with. And we're not going to be able to solve this housing crisis unless we find a way to meaningfully help tenants in these dire situations. And I understand that the position of HPD is that most landlords are doing the best that they can and most vacates are fires. You know, respectfully, I disagree. I know my colleagues disagree. You heard that from Councilmember Aviles as well. We have seen situations where landlords have deliberately destroyed their buildings or take advantage of a natural disaster like a fire to prolong repairs indefinitely. It's happening right now, as I said, with 89th Street with Jackson Heights. And so I bring it up to say, this is a much, much more serious problem. And the effort that HPD is making now, even with the best of intentions, is falling short of where we need to be to protect tenants in these situations as long as it takes to repair the buildings. And don't get me wrong, this is not about arguing with the vacate orders. These are dangerous situations where vacates need to be placed. But the question is, once that vacate is placed, what do we do in that situation to help make sure tenants get their resources, they're in their communities, and they get back home as quickly as possible? And landlords who are delaying repairs or provoke those vacate orders are held accountable by city government for doing so. That is the crux of the problem, and that's what these pieces of legislation are intended to address. And so my first question, I think Councilmember Aviles, with the building in her district, made a very good point about what we're seeing on the ground across the city. And it doesn't connect with this being a notion of an outlier situation. So my first question to you all, Deputy Commissioner, and HPD, is I saw in your testimony before that you had, that HPD has brought litigation seeking in order to correct on 27 buildings, which didn't move forward with repairs. How many of those buildings also involve bringing this Article 7A action?
Thank you, Councilmember. Comprehensive litigation is the first step. And if we find that still owners are not compliant, that's when you really would look at 7A. And again, in the 80% of the cases, the owner complied with the recent of the, with addressing the vacate order conditions. I think, just to take a step back to, from, you know, this picture, I think, you know, HPD invests a lot in fire safety upfront. And I think we do need to make sure that we're investing in making sure that these fires don't happen in the first place. Right? And we've come a long way in terms of self-closing doors, in terms of the self-closing door proactive program, in terms of education for owners and tenants, because that's really, you know, in several large fires over the last few years, that has been pointed to as one of the concerns. So we want to make sure that that message is getting out to all tenants, to all landlords, to stop these disasters from happening in the first place. So I think that's an important point of where we put a lot of our effort. I think in terms of, once the vacate order is issued, you know, both HPD and DOB have units specifically dedicated to anti-harassment efforts. And I think that's certainly something that can come to our attention through those channels. I would also say, in terms of our communication with tenants after vacate orders, at the time of a vacate, the American Red Cross is on scene and tenants are encouraged to register with our emergency housing services. Even if they don't need housing services, we want to encourage tenants to register with us so that we can be in contact with them when things are moving forward and vacates are rescinded. So things don't happen that they weren't aware of and then it becomes a situation where they're not able to get back in, because we have heard about those issues as well. We also want to encourage tenants, especially in rent stabilized buildings, and you raised this issue, to file with DHCR immediately. They're $1, you know, they're $1 a month to protect their tenancy rights. So HCR can notify them as well when things are moving forward and they are able to go back in. We certainly want to hear from you and from other council members because, as I said, some owners do take advantage of these situations to, for their own benefit and to the detriment of tenants. And certainly will work with you and any other council member who brings particular buildings to our attention. Our concern, I think, with the bill is just about the broadness of it.
Right. So let me, I don't want to interrupt Deputy Commissioner, I just want to be conscious of time too. Let me take a step back for a second, just a couple of different questions. And I know and I appreciate HPD and DOB are doing all they can to prevent these vacates from happening in the first place. But once they, the question for me is, once they do happen, which they will, what is the plan then? And the best of intentions simply aren't working. And as I've always said, you can have the best laws and the best rights, and stabilization laws are strong on paper, but if they're not enforced in reality, they're not worth more than the paper they're written on. And so when tenants are vacated, understanding, and I've been on the scene when tenants have been vacated, so I know exactly the services, the relocation services, Red Cross, all of those things. But let's just start from that point on. When they're vacated, what is the effort made now? If the tenants say, my documents, my wallet, my clothes, besides the clothes on my back, are still in my apartment and there's a vacate order, what is HPD doing right now to ensure those tenants can get back in to get the very things that they left behind when they ran out of their house in the middle of the night?
And the obligation is always on the owner who controls the scene, who owns the building, who has the liability for folks returning. If we've issued a vacate order, or Department of Buildings has issued a vacate order, or the fire department on scene says it's not safe for tenants to return, you know, we have concerns about people going into the building. Often after these fires, you see broken windows everywhere, broken doors, you know, stairs, public halls are damaged by the fire. You know, we don't want people to get hurt.
But does the city have any means of even a limited method of entry with HPD, DOB, with the landlord, even for limited entry currently, for tenants to be able to recover their things, knowing that they've got a long haul ahead of them of being out of their homes?
And again, this is, this is, the owner has the responsibility to make those arrangements with the tenants. And more often than not, we do see owners, once conditions are safe, once they've had a board-up company come in, once they've tested the air if there's, you know, and asbestos concern because of the roof is damaged. More often than not, providing HPD or either our emergency housing services or our inspectors with tenant rosters to let us know who the tenants are and to stay in touch with the tenants. Again, does that happen in every situation? I can't say that it does in every situation. But we have found owners more often than not willing to provide access to tenants under supervision. Sometimes it's under the supervision of a professional. If there's a Department of Buildings vacate in place, you know, they would want their architect or engineer to ensure that things are sound and that they're, it's appropriately safe for tenants to go in and retrieve belongings.
And my next question is, if the Chair will permit me, just a few more questions. You know, I'll go back to that point later, but the fact of the matter is, owners are very reluctant to provide that kind of access. And so relying on the owners alone to provide the access when they have either provoked this condition or they have a lot of incentive to delay the repairs, is frankly leaving the tenants without recourse to get back in. And that's what we're trying to fix here. My second question is, what is the criteria HPD uses to file? Not to prosecute, to trial, everything, but at least even just file an Article 7A action? What is the criteria HPD uses to make the decision of when to file an Article 7A case?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think 7A we consider to be our most, our enforcement tool that we use in the most egregious cases, where other enforcement tools have failed, the owner is clearly negligent in terms of the history of the building and the, any harassment maybe that has happened at the building, and our other efforts to get compliance from the owner have failed. Right? So the comprehensive cases that we bring, the goal of those cases is to hold the owner responsible and to have the court hold the owner responsible and have the owner make those repairs as necessary. And again, in most of our litigation, our comprehensive cases do push the owner to make those changes. We, the Commissioner referenced before, the one arrest that we recently had. Right? That is, again, another kind of very extreme case for property owners who fail to meet their obligations over time, where the building has significant issues. We appreciate when tenants are supportive of 7As, right? And when we have conditions that, whether it's a vacate or not, where tenants are in occupancy facing very serious conditions.
And my only point of disagreement is, you know, the Article 7A law is not a drastic remedy. The statute itself in the RPL says, if there are hazardous conditions, hazardous to health, life, and human safety that have existed for more than five days, then you must bring a 7A action. And so the bar is a lot higher than what the statute, what actually is mandated under law. HPD takes a much more extreme position. So my question is, how many 7As has HPD brought in the last calendar year?
And I'll talk about 7A in a second. But HPD also has a suite of tools that we use, right? I think 7A is not the only tool and it shouldn't be the first tool. We have, we have fees, we have specialized programs, and I, you know, you know them. I'm not going to go through the list. We have in this case, and especially in terms of vacates, a special enforcement unit in place to try and address issues in a way that's going to get things resolved more quickly. As you, I'm sure you know, 7A cases are lengthy often. It is, you know, unless the building is abandoned, an owner is very willing to fight through trial for the appointment of a 7A. And that is a long process. And our goal is to get the tenants back as quickly as possible.
How many, sorry, just so I can be conscious of time, but how many 7A cases have HPD brought in the last year?
We are currently involved in 12 open 7A cases. Many of those are tenant-initiated cases. And we currently have 27 active buildings in 7A.
And how many cases has HPD joined legal services organizations when they brought those Article 7A cases?
I can get you the breakdown, Councilmember.
It's a much, much smaller fraction of all the buildings. 12 7A cases of all the buildings in New York City, and all of them that are in dangerous conditions, is much short of where we, far short of where we need to be.
I apologize. 12 cases are the active cases right now.
For all of New York City?
Yes. Doesn't mean over the past year that we, that there's only been 12 cases that we've been involved with.
But 12 cases for all of New York City, right.
I will provide more detail.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, 12 cases is far fewer than what we need. And you're also aware, I know I saw here, litigation to seek in order to correct on 27 buildings. But you also know that when you bring that kind of case, an HP case, there's only one tenant affirmative part in the entire courtroom for all our different housing courts, right? So if we only bring, right, I'm sure, as you're well aware, so if we only bring one HP case for in order to correct, that could take months. And we don't deploy the whole arsenal of tools. And to your point, approach this with a comprehensive litigation strategy to solve a comprehensive problem. We're at the mercy of a court system that has one affirmative tenant right courtroom, as opposed to 15 different eviction parts, but one courtroom for the entire borough. And so I just raise that to say, if we don't rethink the way we approach this and bring, and to your point, I know that there are different tools, but if we don't deploy all of them in a comprehensive way to solve what is a comprehensive building-wide problem, we are at the whim of a court system and landlords that are dragging and delaying, and these things take, go on forever. And so the only point I would just make and end is just to say, you know, I understand the agency's concerns, but the fact of the matter is, if we throw up our hands and say, we can't, this is all we can do, the problem is not going to change. It's only going to grow worse. And there are tools being left off the table that could actually help with the city getting leverage, with tenants getting leverage, to at a very basic level, even just get home to get their things, and on a much bigger level, return home. Thank you, Chair.
The Councilmember.
I'm passionate, as you can see, but I appreciate it.
I am absolutely not saying any tool is off the table. That is not our position. Our position is, we want to get the tenants back into occupancy as quickly as possible. All tools are on the table. It just so happens that we feel like the tools that we are currently using, and 7A is on the table, the tools that we are currently using are being effective. In cases where they are not being effective, we're happy to have that conversation with you. We're happy to continue to discuss new tools.
Look forward to it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, I just want to add, for a point of context, we're talking about, according to the Community Service Society, we're talking about 10,000 chronically distressed buildings across the city of New York. And this is a definition of chronic distress that is 2.5 or more B and C housing code violations during the last six quarters since 2008. And so when we talk about this suite of tools and we hear Councilmember Krishnan's passion, which so many of us share, about like, how the heck do we get the city to do more and be more effective against 10,000 buildings versus a limited capacity in an agency? You know, that's really what this conversation is about. So thank you, Councilmember Krishnan. And, you know, we can't, we have to, we have to figure it out. We have to figure out whether it's Leen, broadening Leen authority with the Department of Buildings, it's bringing back tax enforcement programs that we had access to before, but we need to improve upon, whether it's taking more folks to court, whether it's taking more folks to criminal court. As HPD has done successfully in the past and DOB as well, we have to explore all of these options to get the compliance we need for the health and safety of New Yorkers.
And I think we absolutely agree with you, both DOB and HPD, on that point, Councilmember. Thank you.
Thank you. Just another note, an update on the translation. I don't, okay, I will say it in English and then in Spanish. We unfortunately, and I apologize on behalf of the council, that we do not have active translation of this hearing to Spanish, and we do have a Spanish audience. But we will have interpreters available when the, when Spanish-speaking only individuals are testifying. So I just want to apologize on behalf of the council. We weren't prepared for this hearing. So quiero brindarle mi disculpa de parte del Consejo Municipal porque no tenemos traducción en esta audiencia. Cuando ustedes estén testificando y hablando, podrán tener alguien un interpretador que le va a traducir, pero durante la audiencia no tenemos traducción. Así que le pido disculpa de parte del Consejo Municipal y podemos bochinar después de lo que pasó y hablar sobre el progreso. We can gossip later after the hearing about what happened and what we do for next steps. So thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Krishnan. So my next question, and then I'll, I have a list, but I'll keep. So my next question, and then I'll, I have a list, but I'll keep it short just in the interest of time. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmembers, Councilmember Krishnan's line of questioning around vacate orders. So my experience, you know, and it's really stark to see the number of fires that ARC is responding to, just 2,100 displaced families in this fiscal year alone is just, it's an incredible number. And it feels like in my district, it's every week, every other week that we have a fire or some event that is displacing folks. The feeling of being displaced, that experience of being displaced is just entirely disjointed, right? If you are unlucky enough to be in a large enough disaster that there is an emergency center that is opened where several agencies are responding, maybe you'll get some answers, but it's really confusing. And so my question for HPD is, what is your process, and maybe it's through ARC in the beginning, at the onset, but what is your process at the time of displacement, that very same night, that very same day of the event? What is your process to connect tenants to resources, like legal service providers? I know you don't yet notify, you don't necessarily, well, you don't share contact information for tenants, and we have discussions around that, but what is your broader process to connect tenants to legal service providers?
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think, you know, we have, as you said, started to have conversations around that, both with Councilmember Velez and Councilmember Gutierrez. And I think there is some room for improvement there, that we're interested in continuing conversations with them on.
So TBD and it's going to get better?
Absolutely, Councilmember.
All right, I look forward to that, to those discussions, because it's just really important. It's a really important experience to improve upon. Okay, turning back to Department of Buildings for a bit, and my pre-considered introduction that I'm very excited to work with you on, and as we debate and discuss all kinds of tools to ensure that both agencies have the tools that you need to keep New Yorkers safe. So what does, what tools does the Department of Buildings use today to identify buildings that may pose structural concerns? What actions do you take?
I mean, there's a combination of things that we do, from utilizing the courts to, you know, to our various inspectorial units. We have a construction enforcement unit that has a compliance, construction safety has a compliance and an enforcement unit. That's the one area where we do some of those proactive inspections that we want to do of a wider universe. Do you want to add any specifics or?
Specifically in terms of our construction safety compliance unit, that unit does proactive inspections on permitted sites that have construction supers that fit that category. So those proactive inspections happen. In terms of inspections on buildings, non-construction sites, we respond to complaints, A complaints within 24 hours, and then we break up the complaints, B, Cs, and Ds as well, depending on the priority level and the type of complaint that comes in through 311. And we inspect all of those complaints that come in. In terms of, from the compliance side, we talked about FISB and PIPs, so that's facade and parking structures, but the department also has requirements for proactive inspections that the owners need to perform for gas piping, for boilers, for elevators. So there are numerous proactive inspections that are, that are required that the owner take on, that are submitted to the Department of Buildings to ensure that they are in compliance with those elements.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to mention is on where we want to go and sort of getting on offense. One of the folks at DOB brought up some of the old, let's call them brochures, that the agency had provided from the Koch administration, and there's one from the de Blasio administration, from then Commissioner Rick Chandler, about, talking about where he's found the agency and where he wants to go. And one of the first bullets is a risk mitigation program. It's essentially what your pre-considered is talking about. It's essentially what we talked about during the budget hearing. And that is, again, and we have the benefit today that I think Commissioner Chandler's DOB didn't, in that we are a few more years into DOB now, and we have much more data available that we are, that's there to be utilized. So we have, you know, again, we have existing programs where we do some proactive inspection, but we need to do a whole lot more of that. And the other thing I want to repeat is, it existed once, it needs to exist again, and that is class one, open class ones. We have a tremendous number of open class one violations, and that's not to say that the underlying condition that resulted in that class one still exists. It's often the case where it was addressed, it was fixed, but that the folks didn't send in their certificate of correction to us. That's the affirmation that they actually undertook that. So we are, we have a, and I mentioned this during the budget hearing, we have, it's another GSD, it's another acronym, but this is Get Summons is Done, where under Deputy Commissioner Patino's guidance, the, where aggressively trying to get folks to issue their certificate of corrections, so that we can discern in terms of open class ones, which are simply that failure to submit that affirmation and where the underlying condition still exists. What we need to do above and beyond that is, again, have a unit that goes out and looks at class, and we just go out again and again looking at class one, open class one violations, so that we can have them, move to have them resolved.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. And as far as this goes, again, I'm very excited at the partnership and, you know, further discussions that we'll have, but wanting to ensure that this risk-based inspection program at DOB modeled after FDNY is RBIS, that you have the best information available to you to pinpoint which buildings should, deserve that special focus, right? So in the legislation, we wrote in looking at the building's age, occupancy, ownership type, construction material, number of floors, number of public-facing exposure, alteration history, overall permit history, and points like this. But I'd mentioned in a private conversation that, you know, there's a world of information that we get from HPD violations, there's a world of information that we get from other agencies. Are there any, are there any areas or any data points from either sister agencies or data points that are not mentioned that DOB does have access to that you also believe would be helpful in pinpointing the most problematic buildings?
I don't think, I don't know if Commissioner Shimash has a specific answer, but I don't believe accessing the data or the data is the issue for us. I think it's, we have plenty of data and we know our sister agencies have it, and accessing it, I don't think will be the challenge. In all candor, and this will probably get me in trouble for sure across the way, my challenge is getting the bodies to be able to do it. And the bodies aren't just inspectorial staff, the bodies are engineers, the bodies are data analysts. So I can create that team that will work cohesively together to whatever the data we have. And again, I think we will have plenty to get it, you know, to look at it 42 ways from Sunday, to then discern those patterns, to then identify problematic locations before they become, you know, grander tragedies. That's the challenge, and, you know, it's a matter of resources, and that's on me. I have to figure out a way to get it.
It's certainly on us. It's on us together, and I'll just say that my attention is focused on DOB's capacity, right? Starting with inspectors, but as you mentioned, there's other staff that would be needed for a program like this. But even in conversations, you know, when we talk about the rounds of pegs that affected the agency that were not supposed to affect inspectors, but did affect inspectors and the headcount reduction of nearly 500, you know, I think that's the starting point in the conversation with the mayor's team, with OMB, to just make the point that we need to keep our buildings safe, and we're going, we're trending in the direction of DOB having less capacity instead of more.
I mentioned this again in March, and again, my detentions will be, will mounting, but it's wrong to, not that anyone has asked, but it would be wrong for a commissioner to come here with a straight face and say, no, I really couldn't use more, and then go back to 280 Broadway or their respective agency and say, go take that hill. And I won't do it. What I will say is, the fact that after the two rounds of pegs, that our service levels continue to be, relative to our history, this strong, is a credit to the men and women of the agency. There is some regression, and we talked about it in March, and we'll talk about it in a few weeks in the executive budget. That's in part because of our need to really turn the valve left on OT. But our service levels are remarkably strong historically, and I give that credit to the men and women of the department. But the numbers are the numbers. You can, you and your team have looked at it, and there's no hiding from that. But we want as many resources to do the work we're doing now, and at the same time, we know we have to go on offense. And again, that's on me, on us collectively, to be able to provide the agency with the ability to do that.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. And the bill also points to, you know, sort of the requirement for corrective action plans, the requirement for faster action to repair conditions that would be found during these inspections. Just turning back to an existing program, turning back to FISB, can you, can you help us understand what is the repair process that results from a FISB facade technical report indicating unsafe conditions or swamp?
Yeah, I will have the Assistant Commissioner speak about the timeline, about the obligation of the professional, design professional to get word to us how quickly we go out there, and then the timeline that they have put up a shed immediately, but then the timeline they have to do the repairs.
In terms of the requirements from the professional and the building owner, first and foremost, when they discover that unsafe condition, in terms of the professional doing the inspection, they're to notify the Department of Buildings immediately, notify the owner immediately, and then have public protection installed immediately. So that's our first and foremost concern, to make sure that the public is protected when that unsafe condition has been inspected and discovered. From there, the requirements in the law and the rule is that the repairs happened within 90 days. And sometimes that can actually occur, and sometimes, obviously, if it's a larger unsafe condition, they will need more time. So the law and the rule does make an accommodation for them to submit extension requests on a 90-day basis after the initial 90 days, and tell us the progress of their work. And as long as we see continued progress with that work, have they engaged the professional to design the repair campaign? Have they retained a contractor? Have they submitted an application? Have they pulled a permit? Have they started work? All of that constitutes progress for us. So as long as they continue making progress with those extension requests, we will grant those requests. And all that leads up to what we call an amended report being submitted to the department that tells us the building is no longer unsafe, we've completed all the repairs, and we have now a safe building, which is what we all want, right? As the Commissioner said, we want compliance. We inspect 100% of all of those amended reports. We want to make sure that all the unsafe conditions that they cited in that initial report, that they told us, hey, we found 17 things that are unsafe. We go back and look at those buildings at 100% rate to make sure that they've addressed all those unsafe conditions, and that that amended report is very specific in terms of the repairs that were done. And only then can they remove the public protection that was installed when the unsafe conditions were installed. That's typically the procedure. If there is a lag in the submission of the extension request, or if there's a lag between when the unsafe report is submitted and the amended report is issued in terms of the 90 days for each one of those steps, civil penalties will accrue. They'll accrue at a rate of, it's an escalating scale, depending on how long the extensions have been, the gap between the extension requests. So in the first year, it's $1,000 a month, and then it escalates per year by the length of the public protection that's installed. So the violations do get very hefty very quickly.
Thank you, thank you, Assistant Commissioner Shimash. And it's not that I don't trust building owners, it's that we can't, so the question, my question is, you know, we are relying on self-report, and there is a requirement, right, that, you know, folks are submitting, submitting their FISB reports on the five-year cycle and et cetera, but how confident is DOB in what we know about the status of facades in the city of New York in buildings over six stories?
That's exactly why the requirement is for the owner to hire a registered design professional, a PE or an RA with relevant experience with exterior walls, very specific. We have about 450 folks in the entire city that are designated by the Department of Buildings to do this work, to do these inspections and submit the reports. It's a very select group, and just like parking structures, it's a very select group of folks that can do these inspections. And they are registered design professionals. They have a responsibility to us, the Department of Buildings, but to the public as a whole, to make sure that the public is safe. So we're relying on those professionals and not just the owners.
And Madam Chair, I would just add, that's why we acted as swiftly and appropriately as we did with respect to 1915 with the licensed professional. Again, as you and I have spoken about previously, to a resident who's been displaced two years sounds perhaps as a slap on the wrist relative to the hurt that they've endured, but historically speaking and within the industry, it sent the message that it underscores, to the Assistant Commissioner's point, the relationship we have and the responsibility they have to us and to the public. And when they break that covenant, we're obligated to act appropriately and swiftly. In that case, we did.
And I'll just, I'll mention one other name. You guys mentioned Grace Gold and Erica Tishman, but one other name that comes up that changed our processes within the Department of Buildings, especially within the facades unit, is Greta Green. She was the two-year-old that, in May of 2015, and I was at the department at the time, and went to that incident specifically. She was the little girl that also got hit in the head with a piece of terracotta, and that's the consistent theme with all of these fatalities, unfortunately, that we have these decorative elements on these buildings that are beautiful to look at, but they are overhanging, that they extend outside of the building, and they are elements that need to get inspected on a regular basis. and they are elements that need to get inspected on a regular basis. And that's why we hired this firm Thornton Thomasetti. They're an international firm. They have numerous QEs on their staff that submit the reports to us, um, to do this study to make sure, um, that what we are doing, uh, fits with the building typology, the building age, as you mentioned in, in your, in your intro. It, it's all factors that need to be taken into account and it's an important study for the city of New York that we are undertaking right now.
Thank you. Before I forget, I do have to acknowledge that we were joined briefly by Councilmember Dinowitz. And just a, a final, final question, well, not final, but a follow-up question for HPD. Do you, does the ERP program ever step in in, in occasions where maybe owners are not addressing the, the challenges that the building has?
Thank you. Um, we do receive orders, immediate emergency declarations and such from the Department of Buildings to erect sheds, put up fencing, um, address things that, that may actually be in the, in the process of falling. So we do that pursuant to orders received, uh, from the department.
Got it, thank you. You may not have this right now, uh, Department of Buildings, but it would be helpful to, to just have an understanding of what those numbers are like, the non-compliance rates of, you know, the amount of times that HPD has to step in and how much the city is spending on, on that front. And then again, you know, in relation to, to compliance, I, I noted in my, my introductory remarks that 1915 failed to file their FISP reports in cycle six and seven and then their cycle eight report, um, noted that work that was supposed to be done in the past had not been completed. So, you know, it's, it's in connection to concerns that even though the, the rules are there, there isn't necessarily the, the compliance and what, how can we get the agency, give the agency more power to, um, enforce? And so to, to turn that into, into a question with, with some statistics that our amazing staff, uh, has pulled for us, according to DOB, the number of safe inspections decreased from 56% of buildings in cycle seven reported as safe to 47% of buildings marked as safe in cycle eight. How does DOB, uh, understand what is happening with this trend and, and what, what are you doing about it?
So Assistant Commissioner Shamash will give you a detailed answer. The only thing I will say is that the, the, the number, the universe of buildings is not the same in each cycle. So cycle seven had like 13 and a half thousand, or 13,000. Cycle eight had 14 and a half, I think. Cycle nine that we're in is a shade under 30 and so it's a, it's a different universe and there's a fluidity to the designation of safe, unsafe and swamp.
Got it. And can you remind everyone what swamp stands, stands for?
Just when I need it, it's not here. Safe with repairs and a maintenance program.
Thank you.
I made a joke, can I? I made a joke, Madam Chair, earlier just to get the folks nervous across the way that I was going to say that I wouldn't answer a question from a council member if they didn't know the acronym and here I blew the acronym myself.
That's, that's fair, I like that rule.
Let me just go back to, uh, your point on 1915 Billingsley. The cycle seven report was submitted and it was submitted swamp. The cycle eight report was submitted, um, as well. It was submitted unsafe, uh, but however, the report indicated that there were no, and, and I'm quoting the report here, imminently hazardous conditions and that the building was filed unsafe due to the, uh, uncorrected swamp repairs from the previous cycle. So that is part of the law that if the, if the swamp conditions are repeated in two cycles, the same exact conditions, that they now have to default to an unsafe condition, but the report did clearly say that those unsafe conditions are only administratively unsafe, that they're not actually unsafe conditions. And only until the cycle nine report, um, did they cite those conditions as actually unsafe and that's when the, um, that same professional, um, that filed the cycle nine report did submit the repair application, the owner obtained the permit and they were, uh, well underway in terms of commencing those repairs.
Can you talk about the timeline, the five years for swamp and the one year for unsafe? The timeline that you're...
Yes, um, in, in terms of the definitions, um, and, and the definitions that I'm speaking about right now are very specific to, uh, the, the local eleven or the FISP program. They, they do not correlate to, uh, other programs that the department has and, and building code in general. But in terms of the different statuses, and I always like to, uh, break it up as safe and unsafe first and then the more complex one is the middle ground. The unsafe condition or the status doesn't mean that there is an immediate, uh, safety concern where something is about to fall off the building. What we are asking and what the definition of unsafe is in the rule is that the, the conditions that they've uncovered during the inspection need to get repaired within a year. The safe status that we have, um, is just the opposite, that the building does not need any maintenance or any work on the exterior wall until the next cycle or five-plus years. And then the swamp condition is the middle ground, um, where in between one and five years, the owner has to do some sort of maintenance or some sort of program on the building exterior wall and, and it allows the owner to, uh, most of the buildings, 62% of the buildings are residential buildings, co-ops and condos, that allows them to go through the process of raising funds, procuring an architect or an engineer to put the repair program together, hiring a contractor and going through all of those steps that are required to even just get folks on the building to start the repairs. And it allows them to gear up to do that program, uh, as part of a maintenance program rather than part of, uh, an emergency situation where you could have in terms of the unsafe. But it's, it's important to note that the unsafe doesn't mean that there is an immediately hazardous condition.
Madam Chair, if I could just say one other thing to that. I think that's a really important point that Igal made because when you combine the presumption of what the definition of unsafe meant, uh, meant with the reporting of, uh, 300 violations on this building, there happened to be a lot, HPD violations, heat, whatever, it, it created a narrative that there were these blinking neon red lights saying this building was about to collapse. And that is not the case. And, um, we will, again, issue the report in, in the summer to you. And it will, I think, underscore that that was not the case. So I think Igal's specific, uh, referencing what unsafe, unsafe meant, um, in that, that cycle is, is really important.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to ask my last question and then just so that folks can begin to prepare themselves, um, I will tell you who the, who's on the first public panel, uh, but we're going to take a five-minute, uh, just quick break before we start that first panel. So you, you all can just get ready. Yes, so my, my last question for, for Department of Buildings is, you know, just to, to hear it from, from you all, to hear it from the source, um, you know, in, in Billingsley Terrace, in Ann Street, there were a history of violations, not necessarily related to, to FISP as you just mentioned, being, being blaring, you know, red lights, but there, there were a lot of indicators that, that could have, um, you know, could have brought heightened attention to those, to those sites or sites like them. So in addition to, um, you know, being amenable to creating, uh, with resources provided, a proactive inspection program, um, what other, what other tools would you highlight as helpful? And we talked about increased lean authority, but are there other tools that you would highlight that could help the agency be, have better enforcement throughout? And, and HPD, if you want to chime in with enforcement for you all, same, same question.
I, I will say two things. One, I, I think we did, um, a good job, some might say too good of a job, explaining, the tools that we would want and need. So we will look forward to continuing to talk with you on, on those fronts and keep an open mind to sit with you and, and other members of the council on any ideas you have. And then the second thing, again, I, I forgive me for, for repeating myself, but, um, when we come back next to, before you to have a conversation on this issue, I'm not saying may, obviously, um, but when the two reports are issued, uh, I look forward to that conversation with that new information brought to light.
Thank you and, and of course, and of course, we, we echo that. I think, you know, uh, Councilmember Krishnan, Councilmember Aviles, Councilmember Gutierrez have all, um, raised important issues, important places where we should look to make improvements and we do look forward to continuing conversations with them because there, there are places where we could use your assistance, um, to move our efforts forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much to you all for your time and, and your honest testimony and I look forward to making more progress. Thank you. Okay, I'm just giving a heads up to the first panel. Hey, I'm matching with you today. The first panel... It's okay. The first panel is going to consist of Judith Goldner, Emiliano Herrera and interpreter Maribel Lopez and Lina Renike Pool. Did I say that right? Okay. Um, so you all can head over to the dais. Thank you, everyone. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may present transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of building integrity, including the following legislation: Intros. 135, 136, 170, 176, 231, 313, 607, 608, 609, and the pre-considered introduction. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony that you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. Okay. So the first panel is here? Okay. Who would like to begin? Judith? Okay.
Can you hear me? Great. So my name is Judith Goldner. I'm the attorney in charge of the Civil Law Reform Unit at the Legal Aid Society, and so happy to be here today to testify on these important bills and really appreciate the leadership of the council on these issues, and especially the leadership of Councilmember Sanchez, who's been such an ally on these issues. So, and unfortunately, like, my group practice attorneys who should be here instead of me because they know much more than me, many of them are out this week because it's school vacation week, so I'm trying to fill in for them inadequately, I'm sure. We, so specifically, we represent tenants who've been vacated for their building, at both the buildings that were discussed at this hearing, at Billingsley Partial Co-op Building, as well as the 150 Bay 22nd Street Building, which is the building that was in Councilmember Aviles's district. And, you know, certainly had some concerns about what DOB was saying because many of the things that they were saying are not what our clients on the ground have experienced with them, with vacate orders. I did want to sort of talk about three things, and our testimony will probably focus on some other things, as well as some technical corrections to some of the legislation, and I look forward to working with Councilmember Krishnan on some thoughts we have on the legislation that he's proposed. So, we're very excited about the idea in Councilmember Krishnan's bill that there should be this designated agency group team that will work with tenants who have vacate orders. But rather than having it just be people who go in at the immediate time of the vacate order to give tenants information, we'd really like to see them continue that work with those tenants. Because what we see, and certainly is what Councilmember Krishnan was talking about, was that we see that tenants are put in a position where they have no idea what's going on, they are not notified about what either HPD or DOB or the landlord is doing, and they often even have no way to connect their, to connect with attorneys or their attorneys. Sorry, I know that, I'll try and...
You can just summarize.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just hoping that we can have a designated team who can work with the tenants, make sure the tenants are connected with HPD, with legal services to the extent that they need that, and help negotiate relocation, you know, and put pressure on the landlord themselves to do relocation. On the, we also see, DOB pointedly did not respond to Councilmember Aviles's questions about interactions with the state housing agency, and our experience is that even in rent-regulated buildings, they don't talk to HCR, and they give, they give permits for demolition for rent-regulated buildings when they shouldn't. And that is an area that I think is ripe for legislation from the council. Lastly, we look forward to working with Councilmember Krishnan on the 7A. We do have some concerns about mandating 7As in every vacate case, but we agree that 7A should be an important, much more important tool than HPD is currently using. So sorry that I took a little longer than I should have, but thanks.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Gutierrez. Next.
Is it on? Hi, good morning. My name is Lina Renique Poole. I'm the Deputy Director of Housing Resources at Los Sures in Williamsburg, Brooklyn. And I'd like to testify in support of Intros. 607, 608, and 609. Specifically, I'd like to speak about how those bills can assist tenants who've been vacated from buildings that did not go through fires. In our experience, vacate orders in Williamsburg that we've seen that have not been related to fires have been the landlord's fault. I'd like to give two examples, the first being 273 Lee Avenue. This building was vacated last fall after the landlord dug basically a trench in the basement, undermined the foundation. The building is in a flood-prone area, and the basement subsequently filled with water. Given this, it kind of undermined the stability of the building, and the tenants were vacated. Throughout this, this was the landlord's workers causing this condition on purpose, and so it's very clear that unlike HPD would have the council, the council believe, the landlord has no intention of cooperating with anyone on anything here. Another example is 183 South Second Street. The tenant was vacated after the landlord basically convinced DOB to go back multiple times and find that the tenant's apartment was an illegal basement apartment, despite DOB previously having found that it was not. In both of these cases, we think that these bills would be very important because, at least in the example of 273 Lee, neither the landlord, DOB, nor HPD ever told the tenants anything. The only people the tenants had contact with while they were being vacated was our The tenants could not even reach the Red Cross in that example. In 273 Lee, the landlord also caused the damage on purpose. So we believe that the proposal to use 7As would be crucial because he was, he's not going to cooperate.
Your time is up, but if you could resummarize?
Yeah. The tenants there have not been able to get back their stuff yet. Since last fall, the landlord has not let them in. So the idea of the landlord cooperating is not helpful. And in 183 South Second, prior to the vacate, the landlord had actually expressed that he wanted the building vacant of tenants. He had told the tenants he wanted them gone. He had tried to break into other tenants' apartments while they were showering, so this is, you know, clearly a bad actor. And so we believe that these bills would be able to help tenants in these situations, especially when landlords have no intent of cooperating with DOB or HPD. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lina.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Emiliano Herrera. Vengo del 225 de Lynch Street. Nos desalojaron, no entiendo por qué, de un racismo, lo que sea. Ellos provocaron el fuego, los mismos dueños pagaron para eso. Ahora estuvimos en corte, ganamos la 7A, pero como si no hubiéramos ganado, no hemos visto nada de referencia. Llevamos cuatro años esperando.
Disculpe, puede pausar? Are you the interpreter? Okay, so yes, so you should join us at the table. Yes, yeah. No problem. Para que él pueda traducirle.
Mi nombre es Emiliano Herrera. Yo vengo del 225 de Lynch Street.
Good afternoon. My name is Emiliano Herrera. I'm coming from, I didn't get the street name, but I will figure it out.
Venemos de pelear en la corte, que ganamos la 7A, pero como si no hubiéramos ganado nada.
Apartamento 7A?
No. Del Lynch, del 13R.
Yes, we were fighting in court for our justice, and, you know, we just came back from the 7A case.
Peleamos ahí en la corte para ganamos el 7A, pero como si no hubiéramos ganado nada porque estamos en lo mismo, llevamos cuatro años esperando y no sabemos cuándo podrá ayudar.
We were fighting in the court for the 7A, and we won the legal case settlement, but it's the equivalent that we haven't won anything because they still haven't done anything for us.
Venimos hoy para ver que si nos pueden ayudar en algo, es que tenemos demasiado tiempo esperando.
We're here because we really need your help and cooperation. We have really been waiting for a very long time, and we don't know what to do.
Nosotros hemos visto muchas cosas de esas, y esa gente le da mucha ayuda, nosotros no sabemos por qué nos discriminan de esa manera.
Okay. We have seen many cases like these, and we don't know why they're discriminating us because these people get a lot of help and support. We don't get anything, and I don't know why they are discriminating us.
Porque otras familias, hemos pura familia, pobre, trabajadora, que vivimos al día. Todos vivemos al día de lo que es nuestro trabajo, y no sabemos por qué está pasando las cosas.
We are very hard-working Hispanic people. We don't bother anybody, and we also, we are poor people, but we are hard-working, and I don't know what they are doing this to us.
Nosotros parece que estamos haciendo lo mejor que podemos hacer, pagamos nuestros impuestos y...
We are doing the best what we can, and, you know, we also pay taxes ourselves.
Cuando pasó todo eso, la Cruz Roja dijo que nos iba a ayudar, que hemos puesto y...
Sorry, it's a different accent. Yes, the Red Cross even told us that they were going to help us financially, and they didn't keep the work. The Red Cross didn't help us at all.
Entonces, a veces uno se pregunta por qué pasan todas esas cosas. A ellos no les importa, nosotros perdemos familia.
Sometimes we ask ourselves why these things are happening, why they don't care about us. We are losing our families, and they don't care about this.
Y nosotros hemos buscado mucha ayuda siempre, pero a veces nos las niegan, no sabemos por qué.
We have requested help several times about this problem, and they keep denying the help that we are requesting about this.
Y por eso acudemos acá para ver que si hay más gente que nos pueda ayudar.
And this is the reason why we came here, because we are thinking that we can find people here that can help us with these problems.
Queremos saber a ver cuándo o en qué tiempo podremos regresar a nuestras viviendas porque...
We just wanted to know when we will be able to return to our homes finally, and how we can return to our homes again without any problem.
Gracias.
This is all for, thank you so much for listening to us.
Una pregunta a la dirección, the address?
225 Lynch.
Ms. Rodriguez is in Brooklyn, 225 Lynch Street. I'm just not familiar with the area.
Thank you. And usted dice que el edificio pasó por el procedimiento 7A, pero no ha visto los arreglos, ¿ustedes están fuera?
Ganamos esa parte, pero no hemos visto nada de arreglos.
Yes, we won the legal case, but unfortunately, we haven't done any apartment arrangement, or they haven't fixed anything in the apartments.
¿Cuándo fue? ¿Cuándo concluyó el caso?
Eso fue en el diciembre del 20.
This happened in December of the year 2020.
Gracias, gracias por su testimonio. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you very much for listening to me.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I just want to sort of first, I want to say that I do support 607, 608, 609. I want to speak a little bit about the benefits that this will bring. My family and I, as many of you know, that we did go through this situation, that we were, you know, we lost our apartment in August 2018. We were vacated, and basically, we were just left in the street. The only people that assisted us was the Red Cross. From that moment on, you know, we had a fund for our own. We didn't receive any type of assistance from HPD. Instead of receiving that type of assistance, we were basically given a harder time by going into their offices and them turning us away because we didn't have the proper documentation, but them knowing that we just had a fire. That was one. Our neighbor was given a shelter about an hour away from where we currently lived at that time because she had underage, she had minor children. As soon as the youngest one turned 18, she was told that she had to leave the shelter and figure out where she was going to go. Also, another thing is that, for example, for us and 374 Wallabout, it took us about four to close to five years to get back in. HPD did not want to approve the 7A, so we really had to depend on Core Communities Resist and Los Sures to help us, you know, to fight, to get back in our homes. We feel that they really left out a lot of, we didn't get the support that we really needed at the time and we wanted. It's the same situation with 225 Lynch, that they have a 7A, which was appointed in December of 2023. And HPD denies the funding. They don't want to give the funding for the building, and that makes it harder because the judge will overturn the decision if it's not funded.
Thank you. Have you concluded? Do you want to summarize anything?
No, I'm done.
Excellent. Well, thank you, thank you so much for your testimony. It's very helpful to understand your context, how it's certainly be following up on 225 Lynch. And with my colleagues, any other examples like this, you know, it's not acceptable. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're now going to move to a Zoom panel. I'm going to call Alex Wychen Young, followed by Adam Roberts.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mr. Young from the same coalition as Maribel and Lina, who you just heard from. So I'm going to cut this in half to beat the clock, but you have the full PDF. District 14 has the full PDF. But vacate orders are certainly for the safety of tenants, but what typically happens next is hurdle after hurdle, always confusing, stressful, and lacking official guidance. Sadly, we've seen this pattern all too often. Our coalition helped families on the Lower East Side who were victims of irresponsible construction, who then were relocated to faraway areas after receiving a vacate order. In Williamsburg, we've seen vacate orders surge over the last five years after suspicious fires or after landlords use construction to damage... fires or after landlords use construction to damage the structural integrity of buildings. Three of the Williamsburg buildings are still not ready for tenants to return, with the tenants of 225 Lynch Street experiencing the longest wait. In all these cases, tenants were left scrambling for information, and they desperately reached out to any and all organizations who might know what to do. The Back Home Act can finally tame this chaos, and going forward, operational inefficiencies will be reduced. Most importantly, affected tenants would be able to stay nearby their community until it's time to officially return. They'll know where to get tangible help, such as temporary safe access to their damaged homes. Vacate orders force tenants from their homes in a traumatic, disruptive way with little to no advance warning. Once out, it's typical for tenants to face lengthy delays as landlords continuously fail in their obligations to repair buildings back to habitability. On that specific issue, the Back Home Act would hold landlords and city agencies accountable. This legislative package is a dignified, holistic plan, and anyone who loves common sense should support it. And we put our contact information at the bottom of the PDF. Thank you, Chair Sanchez, and committee members, and everyone who attended today.
Thank you so much, Alex. Adam Roberts?
May I begin?
Thank you for holding this hearing today. I am Adam Roberts, policy director for the Community Housing Improvement Program, also known as CHIP. We represent New York's housing providers, including apartment building owners and managers. We are here to testify on Intros. 607 and 608, as well as tenant relocations more generally. These bills would place limitations on relocating tenants after a vacate order due to an emergency. While we do not have any objections to these bills, we wanted to note that these bills would be redundant for the 1 million units of rent-stabilized housing in the city. This is because New York State Housing Community Renewal, HCR, already places strict limits on relocating rent-stabilized tenants. Looking more broadly at tenant relocations, we hope the council will use this as an opportunity to reform tenant relocations in all situations, not only in emergencies. As previously mentioned, HCR makes relocating rent-stabilized tenants effectively impossible. The inability to relocate rent-stabilized tenants is perhaps the greatest obstacle to building new housing in the city. As we have seen in countless failed housing, affordable housing projects, a single rent-stabilized tenant can block the construction of new affordable housing by refusing to relocate temporarily during demolition. No amount of tax credits or zoning reforms will change this. The passage of 485X in the city of Yess will not lead to new housing if existing buildings with rent-stabilized tenants cannot be rebuilt. Over 40% of rental housing is rent-stabilized, meaning huge portions of the city will not produce new affordable housing because tenants cannot be relocated. This is not only to the detriment of future tenants, but also to existing tenants. If offered a brand-new apartment in exchange for relocating during construction, the vast majority of tenants would likely accept. Most rent-stabilized buildings are over 100 years old. They do not have basic necessities like elevators and functional HVAC systems. Furthermore, they are filled with lead and asbestos, which are dangerous to bait in occupied apartments. Yet a single tenant refusing to relocate can prevent all of their neighbors from having a new home with an elevator and a heat pump, not to mention other features like a new kitchen and bathroom.
It's expired.
Well, thank you for holding this hearing today. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Adam. I'd now like to call up Israel Sanchez, Ibrahim Xavier Johnson, Alex Stein, and Todd Roulet.
You may begin.
Okay. Not seeing the presence of these individuals on Zoom, would now like to turn back to in person and call up Christopher Leon Johnson.
Ready? Ready? Good afternoon, Chair Parina Sanchez and Councilmember Gutierrez. You know, I want to make this speech a little quick. I know I just came here. So I'm in support of Intro 136. Now, the reason I'm for that intro is because, you know, we, you know, the thing is, like, why does not even a bill yet? I mean, to keep it 100%, you know, some of these buildings, they need to have a weight system because there's a reason why that certain buildings, like later on in the run, they stay, they're not in compliance, and they're prone to, you know, like unfortunate demolition. So I'm in for that intro, and one more thing is, you know, this bar called St. Bitis, it needs to be saved. I don't know why he did, asked him, like, Mr. Jimmy Otto, like, what's up with St. Bitis' bar? Why he, why he's hell-bent on trying to shut down that bar? It should be a landmark, and that's all I got to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This concludes our public testimony, and with that, I want to thank everybody who participated in this hearing today for your thoughtful comments and questions. Thanks to my colleagues, and with that, this hearing is adjourned.